Which is families, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, we'll do a roll call vote. Can you hear me? All right, roll call vote for who's here this evening. Pitts?
Present.
Schoolly?
Present.
Richter? Wheeler?
Present.
Darian?
Present.
Ayers?
Present.
Mr. Chair, we do have a form.
Thank you very much. All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes and transcript of the Planning Commission meeting held on July 12th, 2021. And I realize that was a lot of reading to do. I don't know if anybody had any corrections or anything they wanted made, but I'll entertain a motion for whatever. I have motion in support to approve the minutes and transcript of the Planning Commission meeting held on July 12th, 2021. With that, we'll do a roll call for a voice vote.
Voice vote, yes, voice vote. The motion was made by Pitts in support and seconded by Darian. Richter? Wheeler? Darian?
Yes.
Schoolly?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
And Ayers?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much, Eric. With that, I'm going to introduce the city attorney, Tony Castanz, again. He's got a few things to outline what we're going to do here today.
Thanks, ladies and gentlemen. I'll try to make this as brief as possible. Thank you very much for coming out. When I hand the microphone back, it should be a couple of minutes. Mr. Ayers is going to request a motion to bring the matter of the conditional rezoning request back to the Planning Commission for deliberation and discussion, and then ultimately, motion and decision. This, of course, and everybody knows it, is a request from Bethany Christian and Masonic Home to conditionally rezone the property that was the Warwick Living Center on Warwick in Elma from the R3 district, which it is in now, to the CI district campus institutional, which would allow this use as a permitted use. There are two ordinances that govern this. 60-382 is a conditional rezoning ordinance. 60-381 contains the factors that must be considered and decided by the Planning Commission tonight. Those factors, again, I'll be as quick as I can here, but number one is whether the requested zoning change is justified by a change in conditions since the original zoning ordinance was enacted or by error in the original ordinance. Factor two is any precedent and possible effect of such precedent which might likely result from approval or denial of the petition. Factor three would be the ability of the city or other governmental agencies to provide any services, facilities, and/or programs that might be required if the petition is granted. Number four, the effect of the approval of the petition on the adopted development model policies of the city of Elma. And number five is a catch-all provision. Number five basically says that there will be findings of fact made as part of the public record, and that the amendment shouldn't be approved unless all of the factors I just went over are resolved to the satisfaction of a majority of the Planning Commission in favor of approval. And they must consider the general health, safety, welfare, comfort, and convenience of the citizens of the city of Elma in order for that to happen. Just a couple more things. The approval requires resolution of all these factors and any other factor that the Planning Commission deems relevant in favor of approval. If one of those factors or more of those factors is resolved in favor of denial, then that's the motion that would be appropriate under the circumstances. The only other thing I want to say is that there may have been a little bit of misconception after the last hearing, and I want to clear this up. This is not a situation, ladies and gentlemen, where the city of Elma has, by zoning, eliminated the possibility of this use. This is a situation where Elma has a CI district. They have a campus institutional district that would allow this. What this is, is a conditional rezone request. You've got a district that's R3, and that's where the Warwick Living Center sits. What they're asking is that we change the zoning for this property from R3 to CI. That's conditional rezoning. Or narrowly, doing something like that is spot zoning, and it's frowned upon. This ordinance allows you to get around that when you're able to prove these factors. And that's what this is about. That's what these folks are going to consider tonight. So I'm going to hand this back for a request for a motion to bring this back and deliberate discuss, and then motion. I would just say that whichever motion is made, I think there should be also in that motion a description of the factors and whether or not they are resolved for approval or denial, so that when this gets recommended to the City Commission, they have that information at their disposal. And if any questions come up that I need to talk about, I'd be happy to. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you very much, Tony. At this point, I'm going to open, or I'm going to request a motion to open the table recommendation discussion for the conditional rezoning request. A motion to open the discussion and bring the table motion. I have motion in support. Motion in support to open, open it up for discussion. We need to do a voice vote, right?
Yes. Motion was made by Richter, seconded by Darian. Open the table, I have our discussions. Schoolly?
Yes.
Richter? Wheeler?
Yes.
Darian?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
And Ayers?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Eric. Bethany Christian Services and Masonic Pathways, their supporters and non-supporters have, for the last few months, been virtually and in some cases physically knocking on the doors of our homes and in our hearts and minds. This has been an almost impossible task for us on the Elm Planning Commission to decipher whether this proposal is good for the community or not. We have received many pages of letters and emails before and against this proposal. I won't go into details of them because I know everyone has read them, plus we've heard all the comments from the public hearing. We have a federal administration that has put a lot of communities like ours at odds with each other over their border policies. While we have little control over those policies, we do have a choice as to which we want to support them here. Section 60-381 subsection B5 states, "All statements of fact shall be made a part of the public record of meetings of the Planning Commission and City Commission. An amendment shall not be approved unless these and other identified facts be affirmatively resolved in terms of the general health, safety, welfare, comfort, and convenience of the city or of other civil divisions where applicable." I do not feel comfortable with granting this proposal, nor do I see any benefit to the health, safety, welfare, or convenience to the cities, to our citizens of Elma. While I can't make a motion on this issue, my recommendation is to send this to the City Commission, recommending denial of the proposal to conditionally rezone the Warwick Living Center property. And with that, you're just open it up for a little discussion.
Our role as the Planning Commission is to make your recommendation, as stated here earlier, and the city attorney has explained our process. He's also given an explanation as to the findings of fact that are required for our approval. One of the factors is the precedent. I believe anything, anytime we make a decision in terms of conditional rezoning, by nature, we have set a precedent for the city. We're changing an existing ordinance that is already there. That's why this burden is placed so high. Again, the fifth factor states, as the chairman just stated, "An amendment shall not be approved unless there, unless these and other identified facts be affirmative or resolved in terms of general health, safety, welfare, comfort, and convenience of the city." I've spent my entire life as a mediator in this community. I believe that's what made me a good police officer and what ultimately led to my appointment in this position. As you can tell, this is very impactful for us. The only way to resolve this issue is to truly be open to different points of view. We have received an unprecedented amount of mail, emails, telephone calls over the last month, two months. I've had people knock on my door. We held early a four-hour public hearing to listen to this community. And all the correspondence received, it's been extremely upsetting for me to read or hear, that based upon an individual's point of view or opinion, I'm this bad, that they are considered un-American or racist. That is not this community. Right now, our society is ideologically split. That is not only here in Elma. Finding common ground or agreement on much of anything in today's world is nearly impossible. We face these issues every day. Mask, no mask. Vaccinate, don't vaccinate. Shutdown, open. Approve this zoning, don't approve this zoning. Everything we go through right now is controversial. There is no mediating any of this. We are in the middle of an ideological divide unlike any of us have ever experienced. The Elma community, as I said, is not unique in dealing with these differences. This debate is raging all over our country, if not the world right now. We decided to have an item that's been brought to bring out our differences. I see this as a fact that must be considered. I wish we could mediate all this, but that's not possible. That we can have a civil discussion and come to a logical decision. And I'll be honest, as a person who spends adult life mediating, it's almost impossible. This commission has been told that we are not to hear debate on immigration law or all these national issues. This is a local zoning request, we're told, and we shouldn't consider anything else. Are we really that naive? I feel that we, as a commission, are being asked by our community not to deal with zoning, but to endorse one particular ideology over another. Zoning is just the vehicle. But to get back to the zoning, as advised by the city attorney earlier, section 60 point dash 381 states, "An amendment shall not be approved unless the identified facts be affirmatively resolved." That is a very high burden to reach. So I ask my fellow commissioners sitting here tonight, with all we've been through in the last two months, are you satisfied that we have reached some sort of resolution in our community? And do you really feel our community is comfortable with all of this right now? Thank you.
Any other discussion? With that, I guess I'll entertain a motion.
Because of what the ordinance says with respect to the findings of fact of these conditions, I would expect that whoever files the motion or makes the motion, in whichever way it goes, that they will cite the factors. If it's for approval, they will indicate that all the factors are resolved in favor. And if it's for denial, they will recite that at least one, and they'll be specific about which ones would justify denial, so that the City Commission, if this was to go forward to the City Commission, will have some idea of which of these conditions fail from the eyes of the commission or whether all of them succeed in the eyes of the commission.
It does actually go to the City Commission. This does go to the City Commission.
Well, no, as long as they continue, that's right. I mean, they have a right to go to the City Commission, absolutely.
All right, good evening. I'm a little upset. I'm the immigrant on this table. And what I'm hearing now, it's just, I don't know, not good. And just, I'm not putting personal stuff in here that doesn't fit, but we have approved several conditional rezonings. And you should be consistent with the master plan, with the zoning ordinance and all its stuff. And right now, I think we don't. We just let us guide by emotions. And there are sitting people who are against it, and I know it's the same amount of people who are for it. I don't know. I don't know, I'm so disappointed right now, and I don't think that's the right way right now.
Thank you.
I would answer that I feel that the other conditional rezonance via that, I have felt that we have reached a resolution. Not everyone was happy, that's not what I mean. Not everyone's going to be happy with any decision. But we walked away from those situations with a resolution. I look at a community that is split. This isn't 820, it's not 730. This is split. At best, 55, 45, one way or the other. I don't find resolution in that. I don't find that everybody's comfortable in that. I'm the only one sitting on this panel that's an employee of the city of Elma. And I give you guys a ton of credit for the positions that you're in and that you do this. I feel my role is to truly look at the entire picture. That's what I've done my entire career while being here. I'm not comfortable with a 55, 45 in a time that we are facing right now in this country. And we can't solve those problems. I'm not naive to that. But we are what we are right here. And I think I have an obligation to the entire city. This is an overwhelming, because again, the burden is extremely high because we are changing an existing ordinance. I come from law enforcement, where to find someone guilty, you need all jurors to find them guilty. There's a reason the burdens are high. Thank you.
I really don't know what is the difference between having a senior living center or the living center for you. If we, if we, would I, if... It's just community. I mean, if I would have the question about, let's say, mentally dis-eating, would you go the same way? We are talking about human beings. They are basically in this building. None of you will ever see those, maybe, maybe, at doctor's office. That's all. That's all. It's not doing anything good, like for big numbers, like the hospital. They are looking for medical professional people, and they are coming from all over the world. You are not supposed to answer, we need to be quiet, thank you.
Thank you for that. Really, I know that comes from your... Well, I will entertain a motion unless there's more discussion.
Mr. Chairman, one of the, you know, there's two motions, basically, and the attorney can state to this. As he said, there is a recommendation to approve the, as presented in the conditions presented. If that was the case, then that would be opened up for discussion. And as we know, we do have another third option to add conditions. So if that was the, once that's open, and some member felt that a condition should be added, that would be the time to add it as an amendment to that motion. And then they'd be voted on, and that would be an up and down vote. So that's the one. Now, it's up and down, meaning that either if it passes 4 to 2, then it goes up to the City Commission as a recommend to approve or approve with the extra conditions. Now, if it's 3-3, then it fails. So it will go up to the City Commission as a recommend to deny the approval, you know, to deny.
Great.
Now, the other option then is recommendation, recommendation of denial, same thing. It must pass 4 to 2 or to be passed up to the City Commission as a recommendation to deny. If it's 3-3 or less, then it's a denial of the, or disapproving the denial and a vote to the City Commission, basically stating that it's an approval. And if I'm mistaken, the attorney, he can correct me if I was wrong on that statement.
No, that's fair. I guess I'd just like to say a couple of things. First of all, you all have to understand, and I would imagine you all have to commend every one of these people. And I understand that people say things you don't agree with. It happens to me all the time, and I feel like standing up myself. That's just the way things are on both sides of it. But these people have heart. These people aren't in pain. They're doing this out of the goodness of their heart. And we pledge allegiance to the flag, and that tells people, hey, you know, we're proud to be American. These folks, though, are so proud to be American that they volunteer to do this stuff to help the community. So first of all, every one of them deserves a commendation from all of us for doing what they're doing. And just because they don't think like you think, whichever side you're on, that shouldn't make any difference. These people all pure of heart, and they're doing what they think is best. As far as this motion goes, you've got to do something. You've got to be a motion to approve or a motion to deny. And if there's a motion to approve, basically saying that all these conditions are met, a motion to deny saying at least one of these isn't met. When one of those motions is made, then at that point, there can be conditions added or whatever. But when this thing is finally decided, it's going to be an up and down vote. And I hate to say it, folks, but always got to do something.
I just want to set the record straight that I was in the Planning Commission before I became elected into the City Commission, and I am appointed to the Planning Commission as a commissioner. So I do receive my $171 every quarter from the city, so technically I'm paid.
Not for being here.
I'm the commissioner on the Planning Commission, so technically I'm... But before that, I was chairman of the Planning Commission. So just to set the record straight that, so it doesn't come back that there was somebody sitting up here that does technically get paid, I do get paid from the city for my commission that I'm playing with.
Just not this.
This is deliberation between the board, please. We need to make a motion, we need to have recommendations, and I said, please let these people do their work.
Not to offend you. I apologize if this affects you. But I am here to be here, it is my job. And so I will tell you, I have tried since I've been on the Planning Commission to not make a motion. I have to manage, I have to manage whatever is decided by the City Commission or by the other side of it.
Can I hear you?
I am employed by the city of Elma, as I stated. The difference that I have from the rest of the folks here is my job is to manage whatever is decided by our elected officials. I understand the difficulty in someone making this motion right now. I explained to you how split this community is right now. Whoever makes whatever motion it is has put themselves in jeopardy in this community. I've been nervous to get that involved. I never do this. I haven't made motions as a planning commissioner, as the city manager, because I believe that's a conflict. That's a city charter issue we have from way back when. I also don't want to leave everybody out here hanging on this of trying to make that. I'm retiring in two months. Not because of this, it was planned to try. So I guess at this point, folks, I will make a motion that we deny this request. That I do believe that the comfort level and the feeling of the city, there is no, we are not unified on this at this point in time.
Great, any motion in support?
He's supporting.
Great. Any other discussion before we go?
Mr. Chairman, let me, would it be okay if I read the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Motion was made by Schoolly, seconded by Wheeler, to recommend denial of the conditional rezoning amendment request from Michigan Masonic Home based on the findings of fact in section 60 dash 381. Number five are not affirmatively resolved in terms of the general health, safety, welfare, comfort, convenience of the city. Is that a true and accurate motion?
It is.
He says yes.
That is the motion on the table.
Any other discussion? With that, we'll do a voice vote. Eric?
Wheeler?
Yes.
Darian?
No.
Pitts?
Yes.
Richter? Schoolly?
Yes.
And Ayers?
Yes. People around here, I was excited, he's like, he's got to finish this, you guys.
Okay, the roll call vote was 4 to 2 in favor of the motion to recommend denial to the City Commission of the conditional rezoning.
Thank you very much, Eric. All right. Any other, any other business here?
I have no other business on the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. With that, we will open the floor for comments, and it'll be comments only. It's not a question and answer, comments. Limit yourself to three minutes, please, because nobody wants to be here another four hours. Limit yourself to three minutes, please, because nobody wants to be here another four hours, I don't think.
Hi, I'm Rodney Rodriguez from St. Louis. Matt, I just want to say thank you. I know that was really hard for you, and I kind of wanted to start crying with you. Thank you, everybody, for that. And I believe that everyone's voices were heard, and it feels pretty damn good, so thank you.
Wayne, you are a citizen.
Pledge of allegiance. This is probably the first time since I've had a pledge of allegiance in a long time. Mr. Chairman, you know, last time you were here, the people had to force this group to have the pledge of allegiance. So the fact that you mentioned that we having to pledge allegiance here with your attorney, I forget what it was. It's not something that's been going on that long. It really makes us wonder where your hearts are really at.
Hi, my name's John Klor, and I'm from Lansing. Bet you never see a media guy up here. I'm too much, right? You know, and I have to somewhat apologize. We get really passionate, especially when we see unjust, unconstitutional laws trying to be forced upon us residents. We care about our community. So this is democracy, so you say, when it's actually a federal republic, but this is how it works. The people get upset. We come here, we state our opinions and our voices, and we get heard. And we make change. So thank you for allowing our system to work. Thank you.
My name's Gail Rook. I'm from St. Louis. And I stand in on a lot of these meetings, they go on. And I'll tell you what, I am proud of all you guys. I'm proud of all these people. Because if they're here, listen, you have a great... I don't understand why you're coming home to this. I'm awful sorry for the kids. But if they've been stopped, they're going to be here. We want you home. And I'm just, I'm just proud of all of you. Because this is the way it's supposed to work. Thank you.
I'm Sandy Caswell. I live in the Sonic Estates. And I want to just tell you people that I know this is a hard job for you. But my husband's a Mason, and he does not approve of this, and I do not approve of this. There's only a few of our men that are there on the board that want this. And it's because they want to use that building. And they haven't, I don't think they've tried to sell it. They said they have, but I don't believe that. Anyway, my, all our Masons are getting criticized. And there's ninety-five percent of the Masons that don't approve of this. And I'm an Eastern Star, and we're all, it's hard to look in the faces of the people in the community now. Because when they know that we're Masons or Eastern Stars, they really have some snide remarks. And they just really look down on us. And we're all nice people. It's just that there's a few that they need to get rid of that building, but they need to sell it. So that's all I have to say.
Hello. I'm Candy. My name is Candy.
Gilstrap?
I live in Alma. Gilstrap. Gil and strap. Unusual name here. But I want every single one of you up there to know from the bottom of my heart how thankful I am that you do this job. I prayed for four hours during the meeting, and that was a little toughy. I didn't know prayer could be so hard. But I have what's called intercessory prayer for you. For this situation, I'm against the rezon. But I don't care which side you are on. I pray for you. I pray for your families. I pray for your jobs. And I pray for this decision. And I will keep on praying. And I just wanted to thank you for your job.
My name is Cameron Lurle, and I'm from Alma. I just want to commend Mr. Schooly on how hard it was to bring that, this motion forward. And I know how hard it must have been to have your face, have the faces on this community in the backlash. Like he said, it's not the percentage one way greater than the other. It's right down the middle. Everyone in this community has to see everyone on a daily basis. And we just need to come to an understanding and an agreement that works for the better of the people. And I commend all the commissioners, everyone on this board. And when it goes to the next board, I commend them. You guys have a job and a duty, and not every decision is the right one or the wrong one. It just, everything seems to be based on emotion and facts. You can't divide between the two.
Hi, my name is Nancy O'Brien, and I'm from Ithaca. And I commend you for doing this job. It's a no-win kind of situation. But I am deeply, I'm a retired teacher. I am deeply, deeply disappointed that you caved to such negativity, fear-hungry, and hatred that has been shown towards these children. And they are children. So I'm just, I'm very disappointed and just sad and miserable.
Hi, my name is Lacey Evelyn, and I am from St. Louis. I just have to say, it's not hatred. It's love for our community. A community that already suffers, with children that already suffer in our community. I mean, if really you want to do something for our community, you can come here and start an establishment, and invite the homeless kids or the kids that have drug addiction parents here and help them. Because I do that on a daily basis for free also, so I'm in the same position that you, Beth, are in. And I don't get helped for it. But this community, they, we're not racist. We don't hate people. We're not hateful people. We just have to do what's best for our small community and... And so I just, we're not hateful at all. We're a loving community that sticks up for each other. And during this, hopefully, we actually come closer together because we need that. Thank you for everything you've always done, Officer Schooly.
Hi, my name is Yvette Clark. Many of you already know me. I'm an Alma resident, of course, and, is the microphone on again? Can I get this out? It's so much easier. My mother, I'm just really glad, I want to say thank you all for making the hard decision that you made. I know this is very difficult for you to have to deal with both sides of the aisle, for and against. I know that you guys have gotten a lot of letters that were aggressive both ways. Makes it difficult. A lot of emotional statements have been made. You know, in the science world, we don't make any decisions in the medical field without any scientific facts. And that's the way we live our lives in the medical world. It would have been nice if we could have seen that same thing happen in this situation. We have presented a lot of facts to you guys. We have presented a lot of facts on the internet, social media. And we have been told that we were just giving facts based out of fear. One of those facts were, you know, my mother came up here and talked on the planning commission hearing. She has a house that's forty minutes from the border. She has worked with migrants, and we have family that live down there along the border. And we know for a fact of what goes on along the border. And for people to act as if that's not even accurate and that we're just kicking out information that's just fear-mongering words is not the case. So I would like
Learn to talk.
a lot of this stuff to be based on facts. This is the United States. We are legal citizens. And we are bringing in kids that are illegal, period. They're not legal, and why should we have to pay for that? If Anthony Christian Services wants to bring in these teenagers that are not young children, ages twelve to seventeen, then they should be paying for it themselves, not using federal funding money.
Anyone else? All right, looks like that's it. We'll entertain a motion to adjourn. I have motion. We have a motion in support to adjourn. With that, we'll do a voice call.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, who made the motion?
Jim Wheeler?
It was second.
Michelle?
Pitts? Wheeler? Darian? Pitts? Richter? Schooly? And Ayers? Any other adjournments? Six forty-two.
Thank you all for your time.